January fourth, meeting of the Westboro Planning Board.
We are waiting on Hazel, Mark?
I don't think you can hear.
Oh, Hazel's not there yet? Okay. Why don't we wait, give her a chance? Thank you. While we're waiting for her, I will read the Governor's Notice into the record. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and be a remote means in accordance with the applicable law. This means that members of the public body, as well as members of the public, may access this meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the meeting location listed above, and it is possible that any or all members of the public body may attend remotely, with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. The meeting may also be accessed remotely via Zoom by using the link listed below. Members of the public wishing to participate from their remote location are encouraged to email their questions to planning@town.wespore ma.us. When required by law or allowed by the Chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so by in-person attendance or by accessing the meeting remotely, as noted above. Additionally, the meeting will be broadcast live in real time via Verizon Channel 24 and Charter Channel 191, or livestreamed online at westbrowtv.org. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of Westboro's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right, so I'd like to read our agenda really quickly. Bear with me, I'm on Zoom tonight because I got a positive COVID test, so I will attempt to run this meeting remotely. We have a discussion on 400 Freiberg Parkway Site Plan Review. We have a continued public hearing for amendment to special permit TOV 2014-1 Village Commons 1 Gleason Street. Discussions on waterline and completion landscaping for units being occupied over the winter. We have a discussion regarding the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and a discussion on the Town Planner Reporting Authority. So I think we should start. If Hazel's there, I can't see the room.
Geez, Mark.
Hazel arrived?
I'm here.
Okay. Hazel, are you ready? Do you need a minute?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
All right. So the first item on the agenda... Sorry. It's gonna be a long meeting, guys. Apologize. This is frustrating. Is the 400 Freiberg Parkway continued discussion? Jim Robbins, can you introduce this for me, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mark. Just to bring the board up to speed from where we left off last meeting, as you know, the applicant was here and their legal counsel appeared via video. We read through the decision, and there was one matter that the board wanted further information on. So if you have your copy of the decision, which we went through the proposed edits at our last meeting, the one matter that we had question on was item eight on page six in the decision. And this referred to a condition of approval where the draft had requested that Verizon work with the town to provide a discount rate for its emergency responders, police, fire departments, and Public Works Department at rates and terms that were consistent with other communities. And I have reached out since this just to confirm our state, meaning in Westboro, what the state of our discount is. And we do receive already a first responder discount for police, fire, and the Department of Public Works. I spoke with the Department of Public Works business manager, and I reached out to the Verizon program manager that's in charge of the rates, just to confirm that the town already receives that discount. So I think that if you want to read through the proposal for the language on that item, we could certainly do that. But I don't think we're going to improve our position on any further discount, because they've offered to give us the same rate that they give other communities for their first responders.
But weren't we going to try, if at all possible, to get some more concessions on that?
They have not been willing to do that.
What?
They have not been willing to do that.
They have not been willing to do?
Verizon.
Verizon has not been willing?
Correct.
Did we ever find out exactly what kind of a discount we get?
We get a percentage that's somewhere between five and 10%.
And it'll only be for first responders?
For the Department of Public Works, the entire department, the police and fire departments.
So what you're saying is we have no leverage?
I don't think you do.
Any other questions?
No.
Jim, do you feel that we need to go through this whole decision again?
There was no other changes to the decision under last draft. We went through this before. We showed all the edits proposed by Town Council, by our town engineer, and by Council for Verizon. There were no objections on any of the conditions, other than number eight that we just covered.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
As we proposed it, you may choose to edit some of that language, because Verizon did not wish to have a date by which they would complete negotiations, because they already give us a discount. I don't know what we're going to gain on that any further, keeping in mind that this is a by right permit. We can't force them to give us something that they don't, that they are unwilling to give us. We can't deny this permit. So I'll read the condition.
Jim, are there going to be any other uses on this Verizon tower? I mean, any other companies are able to use this tower?
I don't know if they have any other companies that use the tower, but their tower is not high enough for our emergency responders' purposes. So if you're saying, can the fire department co-locate on their tower, the fire department's not interested in doing that.
So in other words, they want to stay on the Verizon?
Yes, because we've always had them as our carrier. Now, this is only for YOAS service, understand?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? You ready for a motion? I move that the Planning Board approve the site plan review for 400 Freiberg Parkway Verizon Wireless, with the conditions stated in the Site Plan Approval Decision 2021-3, dated January 4, 2022, with any appropriate edits and changes discussed this evening.
Second that, Mark.
All right. Second from Tim. Any discussion of that motion? All those in favor, we have to do a roll call vote. Hazel Nurse?
Uh, yes.
Jim Ball?
Yes, Mark.
Tim Kaler?
Yes, Mark.
Pete Bouchard?
Yes, Mark.
Vote yes as well. That's five to zero in favor of approval. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the amendment to special permit TOV 2014-1 Village Commons 1 Gleason Street. The discussion on waterline and completion of landscaping for units being occupied over the winter. All right, Jim Robbins, you have a draft amendment here.
Yes, do you want me to discuss that? First, let me ask, because I can't...
Yeah, why don't you introduce that, because I did have some questions, and I'm not sure if the rest of the board had questions too, but why don't you start? Go ahead.
First, let me ask, because I can't see everyone on this call. Is Farouk Ansari here? He is. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, I am here. I'm here.
Farouk, have you reviewed the draft decision?
Yes, I have.
Okay. So if it pleases the Chairman and the board, I will go through the draft decision. And Farouk, if you have questions, please interrupt me, and we'll discuss any concerns that you might have. All right. So as you know, the background of this is, we had approached Mr. Ansari, who is the developer and owner of the property at 1 Gleason Street, known as Village Commons. It is a transit-oriented village mixed-use project. It has 15 single-family homes and up to 9,000 square feet of commercial development to be built in three phases. The first phase is a 3,000-square-foot commercial building that has been completed for the shell. It received a shell occupancy permit, has not received any other occupancy permits. The Planning Board, because it was reached out to by the homeowners association from Westboro Village, spoke with Mr. Ansari, the owner of Village Commons, about a connection, a waterline connection, to the abutting Westboro Village, to allow Westboro Village to loop their waterline to this project and out to Gleason Street. Mr. Ansari said he was willing to do that, and the Planning Board discussed how they would help Mr. Ansari with the cost of installing that new waterline. It was discussed and agreed that the Planning Board would not require Mr. Ansari to build Phases Two and Three of the commercial portion of the development, but rather allow Mr. Ansari to build it as he chose, so he could build Phase Two and not build Phase Three, or build Phases Two and Three at his time, on his schedule, or build neither, and only complete Phase One. That was agreeable to both the Planning Board and to Mr. Ansari. In addition, Mr. Ansari would need to stabilize the commercial pads that have not been built, loam and seed, plant trees, and landscaping during the growing season of 2022. And that's where we left it. So since that time, the town reached out to the abutting homeowners association at Westboro Village through their property manager, whom I spoke with and talked to him about this connection. Westboro Village's homeowners association has not acted to take up the option to connect at this time. However, Mr. Ansari has installed the waterline at the direction of the Department of Public Works, and the waterline has been installed to an area where Westboro Village could tie in. And the installation was inspected by the Department of Public Works inspector. A valve has been installed at the common property line, so that Westboro Village could tie in in the future. However, Mr. Ansari would not be responsible for that connection. The homeowners association at Westboro Village could do that if they wished, at their timeline and their expense exclusively. The town would not be involved with any further expense or any further negotiation or any waterline installation. The waterline from both Westboro Village and Village Commons would remain private, and the maintenance of those lines would become the responsibility of the respective homeowners associations. So that was the resolution the Planning Board came to in the public hearing, and the public hearing is still open. If it pleases the board, I will read through the proposed conditions of approval, amending the special permit for Village Commons as a result of the installation of the waterline and the agreement between the Planning Board and the owner for Village Commons. If that's the case, if you're okay with that?
Yeah, Jim, any questions from the board? I have a question before we get into that, but I just want to... Anyone from the board has a question? Do we have anything from the public?
Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, Jim Ball, go ahead. No, Jim Ball, go ahead.
The early part of the decision refers to the two commercial buildings. Is that because initially it did, Jim, and then essentially the other language allows that not to be built?
Yeah. So I'll read through the portion. You have quite a long discussion about the history of the project. And on page three, we start talking about what would be necessary to be amended in the existing special permit. And I've pointed out specifically item five under the restrictive covenant of the 2014 special permit, which requires him to build the phased commercial component.
Okay. So that was referred to the initial permit in that section, and then just wanted to be clear. Okay.
Yeah. Whenever there's an amendment to a special permit or a granting of an initial special permit, the Planning Board needs to make a finding for the reason for their action. And that's why I brought forward the previous condition, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have anything from the public? Okay. Jim Robbins, I had a question about a recent email that we got on this project regarding the commercial building that is already built, and whether that could be sold separately from the, you know, whether that was going to be part of the condo association, or whether that could be sold separately. Can you clarify that for me? Because I think that might be something we want to address at some point, and I don't know if it's in the scope of this special permit hearing or not.
Sure, I'm happy to talk about that, but with the understanding that that is not part of this modification. That would be necessary in the future. That was not discussed.
So if they wanted to modify, Jim, if they wanted to modify that, they'd have to open another, post another special permit hearing?
Yeah, because any transfer of ownership of that commercial building is not a consideration for the water loop.
All right. So I don't think we need to get into that now, then, if that's not something we could cover in this public hearing. I was just hoping maybe we could save the trouble of...
Yeah, the original special...
I was hoping we could save the trouble of reposting it.
Well, I don't have... Okay, Mark, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was hoping we could save everyone the trouble of reposting it and going through this process again in the near future, and just cover it under this permit, but it sounds like we're not going to be able to do that.
You don't have a proposal in front of you for the division of the commercial from the residential. The original special permit gave you the provision to separate the residential from the commercial, if you so chose, at a future date. But right now, you don't have a proposal. You only have an interested party, who has met with myself and the Economic Development Coordinator and said, "We might be interested in this." So I brought it up to the board, just so that they could be aware of it in the future.
And I think there'd have to be...
Jim, the only reason... Go ahead, Hazel.
I would think there'd have to be some very strict provisions on the fact that if we even considered this, there'd have to be a preliminary contract between a buyer and a seller, which would make perhaps the, or generally what it does, it would make it part of a condition of a contract of sale, that the Planning Board would approve the subdivision of the property to allow this. So I think we've got to be fairly careful about that, so that this isn't done in a vacuum in any way.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not really, yeah, I'm not sure that I see the detriment to allowing him to sell it separately from the condos. I actually think that it's easier for residential condos to get financing if there's no commercial component, and if those 14 units, I think it's 14 units stood alone.
Her name?
Farouk, wait a second, please. I was talking. I think if those 14 units stood alone, and the commercial building was just a separately taxed commercial building, I don't, I don't know what the drawback for the town would be in that scenario. But I think it's a complex issue, like Hazel said, and we should take it up in the future. It doesn't sound to me like it's in the scope of this, this hearing anyway, so I'm maybe just premature in bringing it up.
I think we also have to be aware of the fact that...
Farouk, did you have something?
Yeah. The Planning Board essentially would lose any control over that building if it's sold to a, pretty much if it's sold outside, and the piece of property is cut off to someone else, so that it will have no effect on the rest of the, of the whole Village Commons.
That's, yeah, that's not true, Hazel, because it would still be covered under the special permit. It just would, we would just allow him to sell it separately from the condo and break it out as a separate lot.
That's something we have to be a little careful about. But anyway, it's, I don't think it's...
Again, I...
To be discussed tonight, as it is.
Hazel, I completely agree with you. It's a complex issue, so let's, let's move past it and just get to the issue in front of us. Farouk, though, did you want to comment?
Oh, you had said 14 units. I just wanted to correct that and say exactly 15 units. That's all.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Jim Robbins, why don't we go back to where you were as far as the special permit goes, and take us through those conditions, and then we can possibly close the hearing?
Yes, okay, thank you. So where I left off was that the board and the town had been reached out to by the homeowners association of Westboro Village to create an alternative looping waterline for their purpose, and Village Commons owner was willing to work with the town to bring a waterline connection to the common property line, which they have done. So if I could take up the decision in the middle, actually, three quarters of the way down the page, on page three, you'll see the words "restrictive covenant" in bold typeface. And so it was found during the public hearing that in exchange for the installation of the new waterline connection, the Planning Board has offered to amend item five, under the heading "restrictive covenant of the special permit" 2014-1. Item five states, "The commercial component shall be phased into the overall construction of the project. Commercial buildings shall begin construction during construction of approved residential cottages. A minimum of 3,000 square feet of commercial space shall be constructed prior to the issuance of the seventh residential cottage occupancy permit. An additional minimum of 2,400 square feet of commercial space shall be constructed prior to the issuance of the 14th residential occupancy permit. The balance of the commercial space up to 9,000 square feet, approved in the special permit, may be completed at the discretion of the developer." That's what the original special permit stated. During our discussions in the next paragraph, "The initial 3,000 square feet of commercial space has been built and received an exterior shell occupancy permit. The Planning Board has offered to allow the developer to build the additional 2,400 square feet of commercial space, and the remaining balance of the commercial space, up to the maximum of 9,000 square feet, at the developer's discretion. The developer may also decide to only build a portion of the remaining space, or may choose to build none of the remaining space. The developer's choice of action regarding the commercial space will not affect the occupancy of the residential units in Village Commons." So that's really the substance of what the board discussed and what they found and decided upon. So that being your course of action, on page five, you'll see that this modification allows the following: "The modification to the commercial space construction. At its discretion, the developer may build the approved second phase of 2,400 square feet of commercial space, and the remaining balance of the commercial space up to 9,000, a maximum of 9,000 square feet, and it may be built at the developer's discretion. The developer may also decide to build only a portion of the remaining space, or may choose to build none of the remaining space. The developer's choice of action regarding the commercial space will not affect occupancy of the residential units in Village Commons." That's what you're allowing him to do with this modification to the special permit. Conditions of approval: Number one, the owner and developer of Village Commons shall design and install a new waterline upon its property at Village Commons to the common property line with Westboro Village, as shown on a plan entitled "Existing Waterlines, Westboro Village, Village Commons, December 2021. The installation shall be inspected and approved by the Department of Public Works. A watergate valve shall be installed just outside the common property line, interior to Village Commons, and suitable for Westboro Village to make a connection. This work has been completed, and it has been inspected by the Department of Public Works. We have a plan, which I just referenced, in this condition, and it will be attached to this decision. It shows the waterline installed in the ground to the common property line with Westboro Village, and it also shows the elevation of the ties in the gate valve." Number two, "All costs associated with the connection process to Westboro Village are the responsibility of Westboro Village. Both the new waterline and the entire water system of Westboro Village and Village Commons shall remain private systems. Should Westboro Village choose to connect to the waterline, the homeowners association will continue to be responsible for the regular maintenance of its private waterline." This condition was written partially by our town council, who reviewed this. I think that's very important, because it states clearly that the homeowners association of each project shall remain responsible to maintain these private water systems. Number three, "The applicant or developer shall loam and seed and stabilize the building pad area of the second and further succeeding commercial buildings. The applicant developer shall install trees and landscaping and seating benches in the vacant commercial building pads during the next growing season in 2022. A plan for this landscaping shall be designed by the developer applicant and submitted to the Westboro Design Review Board for its review and approval prior to installation of the landscaping. All landscape elements shall be completed by October 15, 2022. The existing project security bond shall guarantee the completion of all related landscape items."
Jim, can I just raise one question? The only thing I'm a little concerned about is that I want to be, I want it to be clear that the building areas for the second and the further succeeding commercial buildings, are they, is it thought to be this is part that will have to be done by October 15? I don't want to be in a situation where we have a lot of bare land sitting there, and, you know, and the developer says, "Well, I'm thinking about developing that property," and just letting it sit there. I want to make sure that that is seeded and loamed as soon as possible, because that's... sure that that is seeded and loamed as soon as possible because that's something that can always necessarily be dug up if he's going to put a, a foundation in at a later time. So that's my concern about this. The plan for landscaping, I understand that shall be done by X time, but I want to make sure that this includes the pads and so forth so we know that that's done and we're not waiting around, well, there's some thoughts about, you know, the building.
That's in three seems to address that pretty well.
You think that's, all right, as long as it's absolutely clear. I, you know, landscaping generally doesn't include, yeah, but the original plan for landscaping which was done did not include those particular portions.
Right, that's why.
And that's why I'm concerned about it.
Yeah, so Hazel, the, the final sentence says all landscape elements shall be completed by October 15, 2022. So that's a hard date.
All right.
That's not a, that's, seems to be pretty, pretty concrete that all that landscaping that was mentioned, the benches, the trees, the loam and seed needs to be done by that date.
I could, I have a suggestion here. The first sentence in condition three says, "The applicant developer shall loam and seed and stabilize the building pad area of the second and further succeeding commercial buildings." You could put a date on that and separate that.
Yes, that's exactly what I'd like to do because I don't want to sit, I don't want them to sit there through the summer and just be dirt.
So you could say that shall be completed by June 30, let's say.
I would feel more comfortable.
And then the remaining plan would be submitted by the developer to the design review board for approval and completed by October.
Yeah, okay.
Would that be okay? So Farouk, do you understand what that proposal is?
Yes, I'm fine, but then actually that entire area is all grass right now, you know, as we speak. The only area that I had dug out was for the second building, which we already backfolded and closed it in. So when I go do the landscaping, I can have the rest of the area cleaned up, loamed and seeded.
Okay.
By June 30?
By June 30, I can do that, yes. But I don't know, I don't know what I have to bring to the DRB. You already have an approved plan there, so it's just going to cost more time.
No, but the landscaping, the original plan didn't, didn't show, I mean, the original plan talked about the, the second commercial building, but it didn't show what would happen if the building were not built.
What, we're just going to loam and seed it?
Yeah, that's fine. I just want this done.
There's trees, there's-
Yeah, I just don't want it sitting there as dirt, you know, forever.
Just as a point-
So June 30?
Just, just as a point of clarification for the board and for Farouk. So the approved plan for the commercial buildings shows a common hardscape area with trees and benches. And if you do not build buildings two and three, you may choose to not provide that hardscape. So that's why I'm suggesting that you go back to the design review board. You have plenty of time to do that. You have all spring and to get that approved and then summer you can execute it. You may not choose to do the hardscaping if you're not going to build buildings two and three.
Okay. I see what you're saying, Jim. I agree with you.
Okay, that's good.
All right.
Condition four, "All terms and conditions of the original special permit TOV number 2014-1 Village Commons 1 Gleason Street, unless modified herein, shall be brought forward in full force and effect with this modification." And basically what that means is because we stated that this commercial building amendment does not affect the residential requirements, that all of that stays intact. All of the landscaping associated, associated with the commercial, I'm sorry, the residential component still needs to be completed. The drainage work along the common boundary still needs to be completed. The victory garden and the car garages in all of the area in the rear still needs to be completed. And you have adequate security bond for all of those items. So this, this condition basically puts both the town and the developer on notice that everything that was in the original special permit, except for those that were in the first three conditions, comes forward in full force and effect with this amendment.
Okay, any questions? All right. Jim, I think we're ready to close the public hearing. I don't think there's any public in attendance and we don't have any comments from the public and written comments. Can we verify, Kristen, can you verify that? I don't think we have any written comments on this, so.
We haven't received anything since our last public hearing. I just want to make sure Farouk doesn't have any questions or comments.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm all set.
All right. I'll move that the planning board close the public hearing for the amendment to special permit TOV 2014-1 Village Commons.
Second that.
Jim Ball seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor will do a roll call again. Hazel Nurse?
Yes, to close the public hearing.
Jim Ball?
Yes, Mark.
Tim Kayler?
Yes, Mark.
Pete Bouchard?
I recuse myself from the vote.
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Pete. And I vote yes as well. That's four to zero with one abstention, I guess we'd call that, to approve, to close the public hearing.
Before you move on the main motion, I know that Jim Ball was absent from one of the public hearings and you had the opportunity to review the minutes from that hearing you missed and you signed the mull and waiver.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted that to go on the record.
Thanks, Jim. I appreciate that reminder. All right, I move that the planning board approve the modification to special permit TOV 2014-1 Village Commons 1 Gleason Street with the conditions stated in the modification approval decision dated January 4, 2022. With any changes discussed this evening.
Taking that, Mark.
All right, any discussion of that motion? We will do a roll again. Hazel Nurse?
Yes, to approve.
Jim Ball?
Yes.
Tim Kayler?
Yes.
Pete, you're abstaining again?
Correct.
Yes as well. That's four to zero with one abstention to approve that modification.
Through the chairman, just to remind the board that there was a letter that I drafted for your review, which will be sent now as a result of this action to Westboro Village homeowners association. That letter was also sent to the town manager and she forwarded it to town council. Town council made some small edits, which you saw as well. And those edits have now been incorporated. The town engineer also added some clarification. Those clarifications have been added and the letter is ready to go. So as soon as Mark is able to sign it, and I know there's no rush because there's an appeal period associated with this modification to the special permit, it's a 20-day appeal period. So once that expires, assuming there's no appeal, we should send the letter.
Yeah, Jim, I'll sign it and scan it and get it back to you that way so that you have it ready to, to send.
Okay, thank you.
You don't want me to stop in?
Yeah, that's right. Not yet, Mark.
No. All right. Next item on the agenda is the discussion regarding the master plan implementation committee. Jim Robbins, I'll let you introduce this again. I'm sure exactly what we're-
So as you know, at the last meeting, we had invited the town planner from Northborough to come and speak about their experience with their implementation plan. Their master plan was completed about six months before ours and they're now in the implementation process. Kathy Jewbert, the town planner from Northborough, came as well as the chairman of the implementation committee from Northborough to answer some questions. One of the points that was made was that they hired a consultant to run the implementation of the master plan and she talked about the advantages of having a consultant. The chairman of the implementation committee then talked about the benefits that she felt as a lay planner, as a citizen, from receiving the advice of the, of the consultant. The planning board asked me to reach out to the town manager to see if there would be money for that or how we would acquire money for that. And actually, Christie is here this evening. I don't want to speak for her. I would prefer, actually, if you would inform the board what we would have to do with a consultant.
Hey. So Jim and I talked about the hiring the consultant and so we would have to go to, we don't, if, because we don't have money in the current budgets, we'd have to put it as an article at town meeting, which is how we funded the original master plan update as a, as a separate article. I don't know how much money we're looking at, but obviously we would also have to follow procurement laws depending on the, on the amount.
Well, how much money are we talking about? I mean, we, obviously, if we're doing a warrant article, it's a big figure.
So as you know, we had VHB come to a previous meeting and I, I'm going to ask them to give me an estimated budget. I, I think that's probably the best way to do it. And then we, if we got the money at Tell Me, we'd submit an article for the warrant for that amount, probably a little more just to be careful at, at your advice. And assuming we got the money, then we would have to go through the procurement law of submitting a bid proposal, I assume.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on how much we're talking about. So I, I don't have an understanding of how much Northborough paid for that type of work or if that was part of their original contract.
I could find, I could certainly find that out.
So we talked, are we tonight looking at, trying to do a warrant article on this, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to move that forward. I think a consultant would be beneficial. It's obviously not my decision alone. You know, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board as, you know, and we certainly need a, an amount.
I would think once, I mean, we can certainly put a placeholder article on as we develop drafts, but I think you would want to look at what the cost is and if it's minimal, you know, we could talk about how we might fund it. You know, obviously, if it's significant, if we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, that's different than, say, 5,000. So we would want to get that amount probably. But I assume that tonight you're talking about whether or not you want to move forward with a consultant.
We could put a placeholder article. I will call Northborough, see what they paid because they're just starting. I assume it would be something similar. I could call VHB and ask them if they anticipate the costs haven't changed. And we would look at their scope and then propose an article for Christie to look at. But if I could request behalf of the board to just save a spot on the, on the warrant for us, just in case, for implementation consulting for the master plan.
I mean, I think it certainly makes sense.
I agree with that.
I would be distressed if we did not move forward the master plan and this seems like the obvious way to do it. So, you know, as far as cost goes, I think, I, I would be surprised if the town on a warrant article would be against something like this since we've just spent so much time on the master plan and the whole point is to move it ahead as quickly as possible.
Comment, Mr. Chair, that Kathy Jewbert in Northborough indicated that VHB, it felt to me like it was a custom statement of work, you know, that they were extending their contracts. She was clear that they had funds left in their budget, so they worked with VHB. I'm just endorsing the idea that we get at least a, a letter of proposal from VHB. They did our master plan as well. I didn't hear Donnie say he would suggest anything different, but I'm not interested in doing just what Northborough did.
Sure.
They worked for us. Let's get a proposal. Let's get a warrant article posted and we wouldn't even move forward with that if the proposal wasn't reasonable and if the number's huge. You know, I mean, we can move along in parallel tracks, Christie, is what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, it's just that if it's, if it's over a certain threshold, you would have to put it completely out to bid. So you wouldn't be able to just consider, I, I don't know what we're talking about.
More than 10? 10,000 or?
If it was under 10, then, then we wouldn't need to, to put it out to bid. But, but we do need, I think that maybe we're getting ahead because I think if we're just, I don't know how many months you're talking about. I don't know what their costs look like. And so I think that's the most important piece and then we could put it out.
Wait, can you just explain that to me? If it's under 10, does it mean we don't have to put it before the town meeting? Is that what you're saying to me?
No, I was saying that you didn't have to put it out to bid. If you're talking under five, we might be able to look at budgets, but it's, I just, without knowing the cost, it's difficult to-
Be surprised if it's under five.
Yeah. Tell them it has to be under five.
It will, so it will likely be a warrant article and it will likely be something that we would have to put out to bid.
So in my opinion, I think we definitely needed the consultant, but I also think we should ask for different packages because based on Northborough, they said they were going to get them involved for the first five meetings and then they were going to kind of take it, take the project from there and then ask them to come back and get involved for other meetings when they needed their help. So it sounded like there's ways for us to limit our costs and not necessarily agree to a, a large sum of money, but only really incorporate them when we feel necessary. I definitely think it's important to get us off the ground and moving in the right direction. But at some point, the board might be really say, "All right, at this point, we can cut some costs here and hold back until we need to bring them back into the project." So if they're willing to be flexible in that way, I think that would be a way that we can manage the budget on this. But I think that would be the best approach, in my opinion.
So you might put something like, again, I think, I think if the board wants to move forward the consultant, Jim and I can work together on obtaining the cost and seeing what you need to do in terms of procurement or if there's any ability to fund it within the budget. And then all of that other, what you were describing, you could put into the scope of work.
Okay.
Yeah. And that would come, come back to-
I think the other thing I would put on the record is that, and see if the board concurs, is that someone on the board, Pete may have been you, asked Northborough whether they would, had considered another consultant, which we would be required if we went out to bid, you know, is to get somebody else. And from a practical perspective, they, I didn't get the sense from the chairman or from Kathy that that made any sense. There wasn't an efficiency there of understanding the core plan. And so to just join another consultant for implementation purposes was low leverage, high cost, not likely to bear fruit. So our situation is dissimilar from Northborough because we don't have any budget remaining. For them, I don't get the sense that there was a lot of deliberation. It was natural for them to extend those five meetings and they had the funds and, you know, they have other budget years to come back in the out to determine what level of supports needed. So we're not going to be able to have that luxury. So we just need to work from a statement of work, I think, proposal and see where, see where it comes in.
And it wasn't, I mean, and if it wasn't included in the contract, this is, Northborough would have had to have put it in the contract initially.
Oh, it wasn't, I think it wasn't in the contract, but they had unspent funds from their master plan budget was the sense I have. This was a separate or an extended statement of work. That was my sense, Jim, wasn't it?
That's correct.
It wasn't like, oh, they were coming to explain the last phase of their master plan contract. It wasn't a part of the original work, but it was extended because they had funds available.
Sure.
Can we put a, a smaller budget in the spring for, on a spring article for the first part of this? And then when we come to the fall, ask, no?
No. No, because you would, you would put out either receive quotes. It, I mean, it just depends on the level. So either you would ask for quotes or you would have to go out to bid depending on how much you're talking about. And then you would sign a contract for, for the full project. And we couldn't sign a contract if we didn't have the appropriation.
So Jim, Jim Robbins, could you reach out to VHB, get some options from them and some pricing so that we, as a board, can decide, you know, which, you know, let's say, three meetings, five meetings, you know, three meetings and follow-up. Get some idea of what those options would be and what the, the cost would be. We can decide which one is most appealing and if it requires a town meeting article and going out to bid, we'll at least know how much we're asking for. And then if we go out to bid, we may get three or four different bids, but certainly I think, you know, the, you know, again, I can't really say that VHB would have an advantage, but the fact that they worked with us- advantage, but the fact that they worked with us, if they did bid, would probably weigh in their favor on, in our decision as to who to grant the bid, it would seem to make sense to me.
I will say that the plan was so well-written with so much detail that some, a new consultant reading it would be in a pretty good starting spot. So there may be competition and you, that would potentially give an improved bid. So, you know, it seems implied that they're familiar, we're familiar with them and that's an advantage, but again, given the, given the depth and breadth and the detail in the plan, I'm not sure how much of an advantage it actually is. So you never know who might try to compete for the work.
Yeah, but I don't think we can put it out to bid and then go to town meeting and ask for the money, right? We have to.
No, you can.
We have to probably get town meeting approval to spend the money and then put it out to bid.
No, you know, you can go out to bid before. It would be contingent on appropriation, but that way you would have a solid cost.
Okay.
That would affect the timeline.
I think there's, I think there's a lot, I think without knowing the amount, there's a lot of unanswered questions and discussion that we could have if we, once we have a better idea of what the amount is, I think that you'll have a better idea of what your course of action is.
Yeah, I think we should still reach out to VHB to get their idea for options for a scope, a timeline and an estimated cost so that we can decide which course we want to proceed. Do we want to proceed with going to town meeting for an amount? Would we want to defer this maybe to think about going out to bid first and then going to town meeting, as long as a consultant understood? The problem with that second option is you're deferring your action to probably the fall.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense to me, quite frankly.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that Jim needs to reach out to VHB and get some options and some pricing.
That would carry us through, to me, fiscal year '23. So what is it that they propose, knowing, having worked with us, to, you know, get us started on implementation in calendar year '22 and, you know, carrying us through at least the first half of '23? I got the sense from Northborough, I don't know about all of you, but they hoped not to need them, you know, except on an ad hoc basis following the first five meetings. They felt like they were making good progress, so.
Seemed like.
Seemed that way, so.
Yeah, and I think until we know what the figure is, I mean, it may be, we're talking $5,000 because it was five meetings. I mean, who knows? So it may not be as expensive as we think it's going to be. And I think finding out from Northborough really is the key at this point, to see what their cost is, which we can then work from. At least it gives us some idea.
I will reach out to VHB.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, do we have any more questions on the Master Plan Implementation Committee? Do we want to discuss a makeup of that committee or is that premature too?
I think that would be part of the consultant's work, isn't it? Most likely. Makeup, I mean, we can certainly talk about it, but.
I'll ask that question.
Let's see if that was a key component of that consulting.
Well, I think they were very specific. No, I think they were very specific in saying that there was various ways you can make the committee up when they talked about it and some communities do it one way, some do another way. So it's really up to us, I think, to decide how we want to do that. Because when Donnie talked about it, I think we did, someone did ask him a question about that and he talked about the fact that, you know, some communities keep it essentially in-house as much as anything else with just a few community members. Others have lots of community members, so there's a real variation on how this can be done.
It may be smaller than the Master Plan Committee.
Yes.
I think Northborough's committee was either seven or nine people.
Implementation, I think she said 13.
13, I think. 15 people? Oh, I take that back then. Yeah, that's about half of our advisory committee. I think 13's a lot, personally.
Well, I don't, I think it's still early for us to talk about representation on that committee, so why don't we just see what Jim gets back on pricing and maybe move on to the next agenda item, unless there's more questions. All right, I don't hear any other questions on that. So the next agenda item is discussion on the town planner reporting authority. I know that distributed a kind of a rough draft of amendment to the charter that was proposed. I think we should discuss that because I do think it's a work in progress and we'd probably need to make some more changes to it. Has everybody had a chance to read that? I know we had discussed at the last meeting having the town planner report directly to the town manager. I think there's still some question as to how that would work. I think the hiring and firing would be done by town manager with the concurrence of the planning board. But I think, you know, day-to-day supervision might be done through the community development department. I'm a little unclear whether, you know, how that's going to work. So I'd like to discuss that with the board before we go back to the board of selectmen, I'm sorry, to the select board and, you know, give them our recommendation on this. Anyone have thoughts?
So, Mark, just a question. I have read the changes. Are the items in red changes that you made? Where did these changes arise?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Those are, those are changes that I suggested.
Okay. So perhaps I'll kick off the discussion. I have a broad question that this change was proposed, at least in this form in writing, to have the position report to the community development director. And I'm just gonna, I'll make a quick assumption. I'm interested to hear about the benefits of why that is proposed. But this seems to change that to report to the town manager, which is different. And then, and we haven't even deliberated the original reporting in terms of its benefits and risks and so forth. So I'm curious how this fits in and where this, you know, kind of the roots or context behind the change to have the position report to the town manager as an alternative.
Yeah, so, Tim, I know you read the staffing study. Is Christie still here? Maybe she could summarize the benefits of this for us. Yeah, I think she's probably best able to do that.
Okay. I would just say that I've read the staffing study in detail, even before this issue came up, with regard to this issue. And, you know, I didn't question its roots, but it, but it does lay out, you know, a functional change in reporting. It doesn't enumerate the benefits and risks, so I'm interested in hearing about those. But this one, the proposal seems to have already changed too. So I feel like we're dealing with a lot. I'd like to at least know what the original proposal was for and what the benefits are of having the position report to the community development director. And Christie, if you, could you speak to that or?
Sure, sure. So we, in creating the community development department, the idea behind that is to really create a cohesive group of departments that can respond to development issues. So we have conservation already as part of that department and economic development coordinator as part of that department and then the building department. And so the only reason that the planning board, the town planner hasn't been technically a part of that department, though it is written that they work in cooperation with the planning, is because of the current reporting authority. We've started to develop throughout town leadership in these different sort of divisions. And so the community development director provides that leadership for these land use and permitting departments. And so that's really why we would want to bring the town planner in and have them report similarly in order to create that sort of efficiency for permitting and land use and development. So a similar example of that is something that we did several years ago, which is when we created the finance department. So we took the town accountant and the chief assessor and the treasurer collector and we pulled them together under the finance director and created the finance department. And so in that situation, we elevated the town accountant to the finance director position and we created that cohesiveness within our financial departments. More informally, we have our community services departments that report up through the town manager. So that's our recreation, youth and family and the senior center all report up through the town manager to combine community services to create that sort of cohesive, you know, teamwork in that area and also have one, one sort of leader in that, in that area. And then I suppose the last example was when we moved buildings and grounds and facilities under the Department of Public Works and we've had some success there, so.
So the charter for the community development department dates back within the last five years, right?
Yes, yes. So we, the community development director or the community development department position was created last year.
Okay, yeah, I thought so.
Yep.
And so the, this change wasn't considered at that time? I mean, when you formed that structure, which is the thing that, you know, is most prominent in my mind that justifies the change, was there a reason why the planning department wasn't included at that time?
So, prior to the creation of the community development department and actually, so the building commissioner, the conservation director and the economic development coordinator all reported directly to the town manager. And so we couldn't change that structure without having this conversation. Given some of the conversations I think were previously had about, you know, in maybe 2016, 17, we attempted to create the community development department to really create those efficiencies, hoping that in future years, this year, we would be able to address pulling the town planner fully into that department.
Has there been any, I don't know, creative thinking, out-of-the-box look at how to better align the planning department with the community development functions without changing the charter or the reporting lines?
I mean, you certainly, I would certainly think that Jim and Fred would tell you that they work in cooperation with each other and so that's an informal way of having that collaboration and I think it's, it works well. But I do think that there's, there's, there's an efficiency and there's a streamlining when you have everyone reporting up through one director who really has the responsibility for having the overall vision of the full community development department, understanding that the planning board would not lose any of their authority, but the town planner would report day-to-day to another employee, which is not currently what, how it's structured. I think that, you know, Jim and I have talked about the town planners that came before him and, you know, you certainly don't, we certainly, you certainly are, we're lucky we have Jim here, but in terms of who might be in that position in the future, we would want someone to certainly have that day-to-day supervision of a new person in the position and be able to bring them into all the conversations that would be productive in terms of, you know, development within the community.
Are there any, is there any work product from the planning department that would fundamentally change the efficiencies you mentioned? Is there work that's done that's, you know, say, outside the purview of the board on a day-to-day basis that would be, you know, more efficiently organized or delivered somehow with this change?
You know, I think right now we have, well, so one efficiency is in this, actually in this fiscal budget, fiscal year budget, you'll note that we've combined all of the budgets of the departments that are under the community development. So conservation, economic development and building department are all combined into one community development budget. And so we would, we would expect to pull planning into that budget as well and that really creates some flexibility and fluidity between the departments in terms of ability to achieve department-wide goals as opposed to just having this sort of separate silos. You know, right now, Jim and Fred, I think they, you know, they both participate in the business one-stop meetings, they both participate in the economic development committee, they both attend your meetings. And so I think in terms of efficiency, there might not be that need for duplication in the future.
Okay. And I guess the last question, I don't mean to dominate, Jim or Mark, but just one other. Does the, you've seen the changes that Mark proposed in the charter. Do those achieve the outcome you're looking for?
No, I mean, I'm concerned about planning being outside of community, the community development department and then also, but then also giving the town planner, specifically calling out the town planner as someone who could become the community development director. So, you know, certainly anyone can apply for any job, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the community development director taking on that position and also carrying with it the responsibilities of a current department head. So right now, Fred is our community development director and he also carries the responsibilities of a building commissioner. If we have a town planner position that sits completely outside of the community development department and then they apply for a community development director position, they might get that position, but we, the town planner position still remains outside of the department. And so I'm not sure that it's as seamless as what we would have hoped, which is that the town planner would be part of the department and then have the ability to elevate to that position and hold on to their town planner responsibilities.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Board members.
Tim, can I make a couple of comments here? First of all, you know, I had sent that revision out really as a response to some of the issues that came up when, you know, with Lester and Hazel at the last meeting, because I was trying to address those issues and still accomplish, you know, what Christie's suggesting as far as having the town planner become a more integral part of the community development office, but still maintaining some autonomy or some, you know, direct oversight, you know, by the town manager as opposed to, you know, the community development director. But, you know, I think the benefits to this, some of the benefits that Christie didn't mention, and I've mentioned these before, you know, taking the administrative oversight of the planning department out of citizens' volunteers' hands, I think is an important change. You know, I don't feel like I should be the one signing timesheets and monitoring attendance and doing year, you know, yearly reviews. I think that should be done by town staff. Another change, you know, as we look towards Jim's retirement and someday Fred's going to retire, if you have a cohesive community development department, you have someone there who will train a new staff and a new town planner. And right now, I think that responsibility falls to the planning board and I'm not sure that's where that responsibility should lie either, as far as training a new staff. I think it's an intensive process that needs more time than you or I can commit. And then finally, the, one of the biggest benefits, I think, is the fact that, given the way the charter is currently written, the town planner could never be the community development director. And I personally think the community development director should have a planning background and I would like to see this change implemented so that the town planner has the ability to be promoted to the community development director. I think that's an important change that we should incorporate. As far as the mechanics of this and the charter writing, you know, I'm not an attorney, so if I screwed it up, then we'll have to rewrite it and I recognize that.
The first part, the first changes, the charter changes that were sent to you and the changes that were made would have the town manager appointing the town planner with the concurrence of the planning board. If you, you could move forward with that and have the town manager and the planning board. board appoint the town planner. And that's similar to how it actually works with the finance department. The town manager appoints the town accountant, the chief assessor, and the treasurer collector. But then in the bylaw, which is that second part that we're talking about, the day-to-day reporting and supervision of those positions is under the finance director. So you could sort of, if that's the concern, you could have the town manager with concurrence of the town planner, appoint the town planner, but the day-to-day supervision and the overall coordination would still happen within the community development department under that director. So the director wouldn't have hiring and firing ability.
I'd like to see, explore something like that. I'm concerned about charter amendments at this point because once you've made a charter amendment, it's very difficult to unmake it. And consequently, I do know that the charter was reviewed three years ago. They did not seem fit at that time to put this particular, or make this particular change. And, I mean, normally when you change a charter, it's a group of people that get to look at this. I mean, it's something that, when they did the charter review originally, you had a number of people who were looking at this and thinking about all the consequences and whether it was really needed. And I'm concerned about moving ahead at this time without taking that time and really looking at this and see if there's another way that this, at least in the interim, can be talked about. There may be another solution which could be used instead of trying to amend the charter. So that's really one of my main concerns at this point because amending the charter is a major kind of thing. And you don't want to be stuck with something that you then find is not really going to work. And I have some questions in my own mind about how this is actually going to work and whether, you know, it's come so quickly as to whether there's been a lot of thought and effort to see how this is actually going to work and how it's going to work with the planning board. I mean, I really have no idea how this is going to work. I don't think we've really discussed it among ourselves. We haven't discussed it with a planner ourselves. So I'm reluctant to move forward with such a major step as to change the charter amendments. I would prefer to move slower on this this time and see if there's another alternative or if we want to make some change in the structure, which we can do without making a major change in the charter.
I have to say, I don't think it's happened. Mark, you want to go ahead or can I make some comments?
No, Jim, I was just gonna go ahead.
Maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, but it feels to me that this has come through the staffing study and collectively looking at how things should be run in a more organized fashion and this is the next natural step. I don't feel like it's rushed. One thing you just said gives me a greater comfort level for this change. The fact that the town manager and the planning board still has the hiring and firing, one thing that concerned me, and I think all of us, we had talked about this, of the planner moving under that other position was that person could threaten firing if they didn't agree with their views. And the fact that the hiring and firing still sits with the town manager and the planning board, so that person, you know, isn't feeling that their job's at risk, so to speak, if they don't agree with everything that, you know, that the economic development or the, sorry, I'm forgetting the name of the head there, the head of that position can't hold that threat. I think that, because I agree that the coordination with economic development and these other departments very likely would streamline things as you found in finance. So I think this is the, it's this refining process of the way the structure of the town works has naturally led to this next. So I agree with Hazel that we're just addressing it here, but I think it's come from this whole process that you've been working on for several years and I've been watching and paying attention. And I think it's a prudent process and I like the structure. But I shared the concern about moving under to the community development director. I think that fact that that could happen and you could get all that coordination, which I have seen a lot of, I think that's been happening for several years now with Fred and Jim and they work all together. But the fact that the hiring and firing is still separate, I'm inclined to be in favor of it, but that's my thoughts.
It was, and I just want to clarify, it wasn't the hiring and firing I was concerned about. My concern was the reporting aspect of it, where you had the planner reporting to the community development director who was then essentially reporting to the town manager. I just felt that at this point, there was a way these departments could work together without having an extra layer of reporting in there. It was not the hiring and firing that I was concerned about. So I just wanted to clarify that that was not my argument on that aspect of it. I was, felt there could be a way that these departments could work together, which is what they're doing now, without putting an extra layer of administration in, which I thought might not be, might not really help since I think that these departments can work together without putting extra administration in.
I think the concern is the administration now lays with Mark and the board and that makes, in my opinion, no sense to a volunteer board.
No, but that was, it's not, it's not really the administration. The important thing is that departments working together. The administration aspect of it, you know, that's why I'm not opposed to having the planner report to the town manager because if there's day-to-day administration, I mean, how is that going to work? I mean, is the community development director going to be doing day-to-day administration work for all those four departments? I mean, I just, I'm a little confused on how this is all going to work and I think that, you know, it needs to be thought about more. I just would rather see kind of an interim step before we make a major step in this way.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, I'm inclined to support this. I did talk to three planners, counting Kathy, and they were all unanimous that, you know, they preferred reporting one to a town manager, one to a mayor, and one to a land use director, which would be similar to a community development director. And they all were unanimous that that was a better system than reporting directly to the planning board. So I think it's a change that we need to implement. I just think we need to work out the details and, you know, that was why I tried to revise that charter amendment was to work out some of the details. But I think it's important for us to work out those details and not just pass it off to some future committee. I don't, I think that's important for us as a board to work those details out and make a recommendation to the board of selectmen because we're the ones who know the most about it.
Can I just, in terms of how it would work administratively, the community development director wouldn't be expected to do the work of, you know, the conservation department, the economic development, planning. I mean, it's just like, just like as the town manager, I don't do the work of the police chief or the fire chief, you know, it's about, it would be about management. It's worked very well for us. You know, the span of control previously was very wide for the town manager with every department reporting directly to my position. And then several years ago, when I was the assistant town manager, I was delegated those community service departments. So it gave me the ability to focus my time on those departments. I attend, I would attend council and aging meetings, I would check in regularly. I know Kim holds monthly meetings with the department heads that are under her. Aleah holds monthly meetings with the two department heads under her. I know Fred also does the same thing, though constantly available. And this just really gives department heads, you know, more access to someone beyond the town manager because I, you know, obviously can't be fully, you know, available to every single department all the time. And so it really creates that extra level. And it's worked, it's worked really well to narrow the span of control, which was part of the staffing study, and to give a little more attention to the departments that are doing similar functions.
But I think we do have to be aware of the fact that this is an elected board and the building department is not elected.
Sure.
The conservation department's not elected. So essentially, we're elected by the public and those are our constituents. So I think it's something that we need to think about a little bit and, you know, be aware of.
I'm just not sure how, Hazel, I'm just not sure how this change affects our role as a planning board. Our function and duties are going to remain the same regardless of who the town planner reports to, although it will take away our administrative responsibilities, it won't take away our authority as a board to enforce zoning.
So I'm for the change just because of efficiency sake, just based on, right now, Fred and Jim work well together, but when change does happen, it would be nice to have one silo and have some control over the situation. It would be better for training and, yeah, but I also respect Hazel's point of view on this because Hazel's done this a little longer than I have. So if she thinks that we need to discuss this further, I'm open for that as well.
Mark, I'll just go on the record, asking questions of Christie before, but, you know, from the beginning, the joint meeting with the select board, the point's been made repeatedly to remove the incumbents, that this is a functional change for the efficiency of the town with the benefit to, you know, constituents, taxpayers, I'm sure the internal functions of this board and the internal functions of the town government. So I just take it at face value. It makes sense to me from a functional perspective that the planning function fits in with those other functions and, you know, there's efficiencies to be gained in that process. It is a change. I would say when Steve Diret spoke with us, he was opposed to the change on principle under any circumstances. So, you know, factor in that. From Lester, I heard support, guarded support for this. So I was just curious about the move to, I'll candidly say, well, I appreciate the attempt at compromise to have it report to the town manager. That seems to me to address the administrative gap in setting goals and objectives and having an annual performance review for the position, but it doesn't help the town manager in terms of span of control and the town manager won't be close to the day-to-day activities of the department in a position to evaluate how things are going. So it's good in the sense that the town planner is a highly professional role and it would report to the senior person in town, but it sort of defeats it for me and the purpose of, the whole reason for the change is to functionally align the department. And that's where the benefits will come. I'm also, you know, kind of surprised and I think getting the administrative function, which has not been a duty that we've lived up to apparently in recent years, out from under control. Otherwise, we need to, you know, if we're not going to move forward with this, in my opinion, we need to find out what the practices are of the school committee and evaluating the superintendent's performance and move forward with putting that process in place, if not for Jim, then for the next player. You know, we may not be comfortable and I think there are plenty of problems with evaluating that performance by an elected body, but Steve Diret made a passionful plea that that is our responsibility. So if we're not going to make this move, I think we need to put in place the practices to be able to address goals and objectives for the department and performance review at the end of a period, whether that's fiscal year or calendar year. So those are my comments. But I'm supportive of the change as it comes and I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, discussing the workflow or whatever. I don't know what's time critical about doing this now. Perhaps you could, you know, address that if there's something versus fall town meeting, for example.
Yeah, I think that we're just watching the evolution of the community development department and this was a next step that, you know, we had identified internally and that the board had identified as a goal. You know, I think that, you know, Mark mentioned retirement and, you know, I think that it's important for anyone to sort of understand what they're getting into and what they're applying for. And so I think that that's, you know, part of the consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tim, I think you actually make a really good point about, you know, the span of control and whether, you know, having the town planner report to Christie directly when Christie is not involved in the day-to-day operations of the community development department, you know, that's persuasive argument for me as to go back to the original language. You know, I thought, I heard Steve Diret's arguments and I really thought it was based around a, and again, I hate to put words in his mouth, but based around the, you know, argument that the planning board should have the ability to fire the town planner if they were unsatisfied with their performance. And I'm not sure that's a good enough reason for me to leave the structure the way it is. We would still have concurrent, you know, firing, we could certainly implement
Influence, for sure.
A firing process and, you know, but I don't think, I think it could become political. And that was one of the things that our discussions with other town planners emphasized was that, you know, it took a lot of the political aspect out of it by making a change like this. So I, I don't know, I could go either way as to the language on the amendment, but I do think it's a beneficial change.
I'm not insensitive to the points that Hazel made about, you know, the potential influence of a community development director. I just feel that in the case of either performance that doesn't meet standard, you know, from an employee reporting perspective, or misalignment with this board's goals and objectives, that we're a publicly elected body meeting twice per month, we have ample opportunity to express dissatisfaction publicly. If we're not able to remedy that behind the scenes with the community development director and the town manager and the town planner, whoever that may be. So, but I'm not insensitive to what Hazel's saying. It certainly will be a new way of operating. I'm just not, I think on balance that having no review process, you know, will be aided by having this in place. I wish there was a way of doing it short of the charter change, but I understand why that's necessary. So.
Mark, one further comment if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think another thing that just struck me is, you know, coming from five years on economic development before this and seeing the coordination of those two and seeing how the process has improved dramatically from some of the changes that were encouraged by that, I think it's a really good connection. I think it's, I think it all does work together. And I think you make a good point because Hazel, I hear what you're saying. I think that this board is still going to be elected. If we feel that a community developer, you know, I love working with Fred, but it could be someone different, is behaving in a way that is not serving us well, we're going to have the ability to speak towards that in a loud voice in public meetings, I think, and make that be addressed. And we still get the vote the way we want to vote at the end of the day. And so to me, I think there is, that is the separation. That elected board can still comment, but I want to stress when I saw that whole group working together in economic development with the feedback from both these parties, it worked really well. So it seems like the right fit to me.
I just have one question for Christie at the moment. Is it the plan of the town to have the community development director also be head of one of the other departments under which it is?
Currently, it could be the building commissioner. If the town, the way that we've proposed it is that if the town planner were a part of the department, then you could also be the town, it could also hold the functions of the town planner. Certainly as we grow, I mean, we might in future years evaluate the need for a community development director that stands on its own with a building commissioner and a town planner. But at this point, you know, our recommendation is to elevate one of the current department heads to that position as we've done with Fred and as we did with Leah in the finance department.
See, that quite frankly makes no sense to me. I mean, if you're going to have a community development department, then you have a community development director who is a different person from the department heads. development director who is a different person from the department heads, because I don't understand how you can be a department head and at the same time be the community development director and be doing the administrative work for the other three departments. I mean, it just, as I said, administratively, if you're going to do this the way you think the town should be doing it, then I, I do feel that this, you need a separate community development director, and so...
We asked Fred to speak towards that, maybe?
Yeah, but...
He's been serving in that role?
I understand, but that's not the point. I'm not looking at Fred as a person, I'm looking at the person, who could be anybody, but to me, I don't understand why the person has both those jobs.
So it's a, so the reason, so the reason that we've done what we've done is, you know, it's a, you know, financially, it makes sense. Also, it's, you know, one of the many functions of the community development director is to function also as the building commissioner. Fred doesn't perform day-to-day administrative work for the economic development department and the conservation department, he manages that. So I think Fred can speak to that certainly better than I can.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at it generally. If, it could have been the head of conservation, I mean, it could have been any of those people that could have been the community development director, and I think combining the two, that's why I'm concerned about how this is actually going to work.
It's only written that it could be the building commissioner at this point, but...
Only the building commissioner and the town planner could be elevated in that role?
Currently, it's just the building commissioner.
Okay, does this modify that?
This would modify it to allow the town planner.
To include those two?
Right.
But not in economic development, even if we move from a coordinator to a director level?
Yeah, I don't believe it's written that way.
These would be the only two positions that could be elevated?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But that doesn't say this in this.
That was a proposed adjustment from Mark at last conversation.
So, I mean, as I said, I don't think this sets forth that particular idea, and why is it just the building department and the planning that would move into that? I mean, as I said, my concern is I think that there needs more time and to look at this before we make this change. I just think we're moving into it too quickly without looking at what the consequences may be.
Christie, can I ask you, what kind of timing do we need to consider? I know the Board of Selectmen is looking for us to go back and meet with them. What kind of timing do we need to consider as far as, you know, putting this on the warrant or waiting till the next, till the fall? I'm just curious to know when you need an answer, or do we have time to discuss this further, and, you know, if that's the board's desire?
Sure. The select board had made it a goal for this year with going on the annual town meeting warrant, that's why we, we'd met with you and Jim several months ago, and so we, I think at the time, all felt that the meeting in November was the right timing to get the boards together, because they would certainly want to move this forward with the support of the planning board. I would think that we would want, I mean, the warrant will close in February, so I believe the select board will want to hear from you this month.
All right, so I think, you know, I'm not sure if we have more questions tonight, but I think we should try and make a decision on this at our next meeting as to which way we're going to go with it, and then maybe do a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen or, you know, shortly after that, so they can get a sense of whether they should put this on the warrant.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if, it doesn't sound like this is the case, but if the planning board were just supportive of the recommended amended articles or amended charter and bylaws, then you could just send a memo to the board. It sounds like if you're coming back with changes to that, then maybe a joint meeting would be helpful to present that.
So relative to that, Mr. Chair, I would just ask, before the next meeting, if that's the way we're going to proceed, that we get a copy of the charter amendment, that this document that you and Christie, you know, kind of concur on, you know, I guess that's what I'm saying. There's a red line and a blue line.
No, I agree with that, and that's...
I'm not criticizing the fact that you made changes, just that before we come back, if indeed we're making a vote on recommending something to the Board of Selectmen, is that what we'll do?
It should be a final copy.
It should be the final copy, and we can read it, you know, a day or two before.
Yeah, and I agree with that, Tim, because, you know, I know that Christie was on vacation when I sent that out, and, you know, I think she just got it, so I think there, you know, one of the things I'd like to do is go back and look at that language with her, with Jim, with Fred.
And no criticism, just clarity.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, I want to get it right, so let's try and get a final version of that out, you know, at least a week before our next meeting, and then hopefully we, you know, can fine-tune it as needed, but hopefully it'll be a finished product and we'll be able to make a decision about whether to support it.
Thank you.
I don't know if you're looking to hear from more folks about kind of how this will work, but, you know, I would suggest that if you are, you know, you might talk to the Chair of the Conservation Commission, the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, the Board of, the Chief Assessor sits on the Board of Assessors and supports that group, and he reports to the Finance Director, so there might be some opportunity for additional input from internal town committees.
Well, you know, I'm on the Board of Assessors as well, and I don't see that change affecting his performance in the least, but, yeah, I think it would be good to hear from Todd Com and, you know, see how that's, how they feel that change has affected their relationship with the Director of Conservation. I can reach out to them before next meeting as well and see if we can get some, some feedback from them. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Christie, for coming in. Happy New Year to you, and we will move on. I think we just had a couple other issues on the agenda, we had some minutes.
Mark, we have minutes from 12:21 is the date, that's the only one we have for this meeting, correct, Kristen? So I think everyone received a copy of those from Kristen. Any questions on those?
I made one clarification that I gave to Kristen.
All right, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that. Mark, do you do the roll call on that, or do I? What would you prefer?
You can do it.
Oh, great. All right, Mark.
You do it.
How do you vote on that, Mark?
Silverberg votes yes.
Peter?
Bouchard, yes.
Kim?
Kayler, yes.
Mary, yes.
And Ball, yes. Five-zero on that one. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Okay. The only other issue we have is, that I know of, and is the 2022 meeting dates, we just got an announcement from the Board of Health today that recommending that we return to remote meetings through the month of January. Just wanted to talk to the board about that, if we should hold our next meeting remotely to comply with that request by the Board of Health. Any thoughts?
No.
I would agree.
Eighteenth. Not a lot of choice.
Good point.
Well, I do think it was a request, but, you know, I would like to comply with that request, so...
Oh, yeah.
We'll plan on doing a remote meeting on the 18th.
Mark, can I ask whether anybody knows, oh, whether anybody knows what happened at the ZBA meeting last night on Main Street?
Yeah, I was going to report out on that when you were ready to hear noon business. Last evening, well, first of all, as you know, we sent a letter on the 23rd regarding this board's position of converting the existing home at 3 East Main Street to a three-family home, and the ZBA last evening held their meeting, they had our comments and the comments from the building commissioner also supporting the change, and they voted to grant the special permit to create the conversion to a three-family residential unit.
Oh, great.
Yeah, Jim, can you tell me what, did they have any conditions for that permit?
I haven't seen their permit, so I don't know the conditions.
The only conditions, Mark, were a landscaping plan showing where the parking would be and landscaping on the lot. They're not proposing any increasing size, it's actually going to shrink tiny amount, and then it was also all two-bedroom only, they would not allow any three bedrooms to try to protect school population.
Was there any reference to the exterior of the building?
The intent is to restore it completely.
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yes, he had plans last night, the plans looked terrific.
Okay, all right.
And anything on the sidewalk easement?
Did they?
That was a...
To my knowledge, that wasn't brought up.
It wasn't brought up.
Okay, good.
Do we know if they consulted with engineering?
I do not know.
And then they didn't consider having the applicant consult, I'm not even sure that they could do that, but have them consult with design review?
So, just so you know, procedurally, in this case, as it would be in the case of any ZBA project where there's construction involved, a site plan is required. In the residential district, off-street parking is required, so they need to submit a grading and parking plan for this site at that time, the survey would show where the right-of-way is, and if the right-of-way were wide enough to accommodate expansion of a sidewalk or something further than what you have now.
But design review has no control over this, because it's not a new building, essentially.
Well, you have no control over it because it's a residential use.
Exactly, yeah.
If it were a commercial use, whether it was rehabilitated, repurposed, or new construction, you would, but it's residential, and so you don't...
And the same with historical commission, there's no...
I think so.
Yeah, on that, so we'll just hope that the plans will show that it's going to go back to what it looked like.
But just to go back to Mark's question, there is a required engineering review.
Yeah, I think maybe when we look at, you know, doing some of that master plan implementation, we should look at the design review role on some of these historic buildings that may be residential, and, you know, I'm not sure, I know it's not in their authority now, but, you know, it might be something we want to consider. You know, having a design review look at some plans on this type of building to make sure it's consistent with the historical nature of the architecture and so forth. You know, I don't know, just a thought.
That's a slippery slope.
All right.
So as a point of information, just follow up on that thought. So for example, if the Arcade Building or the building at 1 West Main Street where Cork and Grain is were repurposed for a mixed use, that would automatically trigger a permit from the planning board, which would automatically trigger design review. So any existing building in the downtown, unless it were repurposed exclusively for residential, would require a design review.
All right, why don't we move past that, because that's certainly a bigger discussion and not really on our agenda for the evening. Is there any other issues or updates, Jim Robbins?
Just to give you an idea of what's coming down the pike, we received a site plan review application for 9 Oda Street. That will be a landscape firm that will be building a new building, approximately 20,000 square feet, which will contain their landscape equipment, and they'll also have a commercial tenant. As you know, currently 9 Oda Street is the DHL and the fitness use, the building that's there currently will remain, and the uses in the current building will remain, with the exception that the fitness use will move to the new building as a shared tenant space with the landscape firm, and we'll be seeing that application for a public hearing in February.
Any other updates, any questions?
I had one, I guess, suggestion, Mark, following up on a conversation that you and I had just on, and separate from the issue of the reporting relationship for the town planner, just on planning board operations and, you know, some efficiencies that we might look to just kind of in operations. And if you want some specifics, it's, you know, just having information before meetings, understanding the summary outcomes from the side working sessions with applicants, just records of correspondence when they're coming in from stakeholders on matters that are important to the board, I think just goals and objectives with the master plan implementation and zoning rewrite, you know, just what's the work that we need to accomplish and when. And then the other more, you know, there were a couple of innovative things, but as you know, I've had, I guess I've been a little conflicted, you might say, with the requests we make of applicants and buy right development for, not even for mitigation, just contribution. And while I'm supportive of that in principle, I was thinking that having, you know, that process be more transparent, in other words, the master plan lays out goals for what the priorities in town, so a new developer coming to town, even with buy right, you know, we can say, look, here's a list of priorities. We would appreciate, you know, a top five priority is a donation to the Affordable Housing Trust, or an easement for B-Walk trails, or a contribution to build them. So it seemed to me, one way to move forward was that there's a list that's aligned with the master plan goals where it's a buy right, and I'm separating that from a special permit. I don't know that there is not mitigation, specific mitigation, we would seek from a buy right project, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying where we may be just looking for concessions overall or contributions to the town, having a list ourselves of what those priorities are, and I guess the thing that I learned through talking to you was, you know, the infamous corner at Flanders Road and East Main Street, you know, we've brought that up a number of times with the development out on that side of town, buy right or otherwise, and I was just curious, you know, is that corner on the DPW's plans for improvement? And I think I came to find out, it may or may not be, but that there's already a mitigation fund set aside by Leah Talbot for that, and that was a surprise to me, so I was curious to know if there are other set-aside mitigation funds, you know, because it seems to me that those should also be on a list for developers to say, hey, look at, you know, this exists, we're collecting funds, and having, as you said, Mark, I think at one time, are we asking for $1,000 or $100,000, you know, some measure of what we would be looking for, I think puts the applicants for buy right in a better position for us to be transparent, and they're coming in to us where we're saying, these are our priorities, and no, we're not looking for specific mitigation, but we are looking for perhaps these contributions, given what you're planning to do. So that was, that was more innovative idea, but, and all represent work that we would have to do and change, but I just was wondering, how do we work on our work together?
Do you think we could have a set-aside, a work session, Mark, to kind of talk about these things?
Yeah, and I'd like, yeah, so I think Tim raised a bunch of interesting points, some distinctive points about, you know, getting information in a timely fashion. We've always had a policy that it needs to be in by Thursday, that policy seems to ebb and flow depending on the applicant's whims and not necessarily, you know, strictly enforced, and I think that's, you know, out of a desire to be amenable to applicants and, you know... And I think that's, you know, out of a desire to be amenable to applicants and, you know, again, maybe not the best decision to bend that deadline, because it doesn't give us as a board a chance to consider, you know, and review documents. But the bigger issue that you're talking about as far as, we've talked about, you know, how zoning changes are presented to the board and, you know, establishing a process for how those come to the board, so that, yeah. But I think, you know, when we talk about buy right developments, I think we really need to look at writing into the zoning what is expected from a mitigation standpoint, whether it be if there's increased traffic, you know, what kind of formula can we create so that a developer or an applicant can look at the zoning and specifically know, well, I'm going to create X number of trips, so I'm going to have to expect this type of mitigation towards traffic, or this type of mitigation towards water sewer, or, and we need to really build that right into the zoning. It's the same thing that we would ask for in a special permit, we just have more, I guess more leverage on a special permit, you know, whereas at buy right, we really have to relate it to the project more. You know, so I, I think that's a, that's a big change, and, you know, the zoning subcommittee and as we move forward with the plan implementation, those are things that we really need to incorporate right into the zoning.
Well, Mark, could we schedule...
If that makes sense to you.
Yeah, could we schedule a work session so that we can talk about some of these things?
Sure, but I don't know how many of us can be there. I think it's two of us, so, you know, obviously Tim would like to be there.
As part, as an agenda item in a regular meeting.
Yeah, as a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, just an open meeting.
Absolutely, I think one of the things we wanted, one of the things we wanted to talk about tonight before we left was having an additional meeting in February, because there's quite a bit on the agenda, and we, you know, that would give us an opportunity to add an item like this and really go through it in detail. So I think, you know, if, I'm not sure how everybody's February looks, we do have school vacation to worry about, but, you know, I'd like to maybe look at that and put another, another meeting on. So right now we have the first and the 15th.
If I could, I had asked Mark for an additional meeting in the month of, in the month of February, because we are going to have some zoning articles, and I don't know what the timing will be on the public hearings yet, and I have to present these articles to the selectmen and the advisory finance committee prior to town meeting. So I had asked that perhaps we could have three meetings in the month of February. I know that that is tight and it's a commitment for people's evenings, but I think we have to do it. And if we look at the calendar, if you're going to meet February 1 and the 15th, you might also consider meeting the 22nd. But if you keep the meeting on March 1st, that's actually for Tuesdays.
Yeah, so Jim, I would suggest, Jim, I would suggest maybe the 8th instead of the 22nd, because the 22nd is vacation week. I'm not sure if Pete has his plans or Jim has plans.
I'm just suggesting, that's fine.
So maybe we do the 1st, the 8th, and the 15th?
I can do the 8th.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
That's fine.
Yeah, and it'll be a hybrid, so if you're not in town, we could do it remotely, but why don't we plan on three meetings in February, then the 1st, the 8th, and the 15th? All right, any other business?
Is worthy of, you know, kind of what should be in scope for the working session discussion? I laid a lot out there, I wouldn't pretend that, you know, we could be in an all-day workshop, you know, whiteboarding and putting sticky notes up on stuff. I'm more into what's the possible, what's the appropriate. I would, I would be interested, Jim, I don't know whether it's possible, but maybe I should ask Leah Talbot, how many of these set aside mitigation funds were accumulating? And then, you know, specifically with Flanders Road, I'd be, before the Dolan cell, I know they're amenable to work with the town, somebody should get down there and get that moving. I don't know whether we're a million dollars short or, you know, five million short, but...
There's one mitigation fund, but within the mitigation fund, there are projects named and amounts attached to those projects. So for example, there was a contribution by 129 East Main Street, the Highlands, to that intersection of Flanders and East Main. There was a contribution from the Avalon Project on Flanders Road, almost in Southborough, for the same project. There was a contribution, most recently, from Cumberland Farms, $25,000 to that fund. It's all one fund, but within the fund, there are projects named, so, and there is accounting held for that. I'm trying to think if the, oh, and also there's money set aside in that fund from the Partners Project, again, for the East Main Street-Flanders Road intersection. But there's also money that was contributed, contributed by Amazon from their three projects that goes into that fund, but for the Oda Street corridor.
Okay.
So the fund is...
Primarily traffic and road related?
Yes. And it's, the advantage to having it in one fund is it accrues interest. It's better to have it in one large sum than a whole bunch of little ones, so we do have the right to establish that fund for mitigation. It sounds to me like the discussion is around having specific items be listed in the zoning, much the same that we do for the industrial D District, where they have to do environmentally sensitive development. That's okay, as long as it's specific in the zoning, so maybe you would say contribution to one of the following, and then you would discuss what the contribution might be. But you can't require any of these things to a certain amount and deny the site plan if they don't give it to you, because it's a buy right development, just as long as you understand that. In the case of a special permit, if you said, well, our intersection is broken, and you're going to locate right next to the intersection, and you're going to be increasing traffic, this is what we think you should do. In that case, it's a discretionary permit, they either do what you tell them or they don't get the permit. So that's the difference, and that's actually the reason that most businesses prefer that things be approved by site plans, so that they're not in a situation where they have a heavy-handed approval process. I certainly understand that, it's just the town needs to understand that as well. And when we have smaller projects, it's sometimes very difficult to equate what mitigation would be, say, for a brewery as opposed to a warehouse, just to give two examples.
And I think we have to look at things, obviously, like the affordable housing. I mean, you know, what kind of contributions there? I mean, you know, I mean, $25,000 adds up, so, you know, you really have to think about looking at the master plan and saying, all right, these are the things that the master plan would like to see accomplished in this community, and obviously affordable housing is one, and there are others. So, you know, I think we also have to look at those as possible mitigation and not just, you know, traffic, we have to kind of balance these things off.
So there's a big piece of it that lies in zoning, that would require actual formal changes in zoning, and then there's other things that we could do. I'm just looking for some, you know, transparency too, and this could be alignment less externally than internally. Like where is the Flanders Road intersection on the DPW's priority list? I know they come forward with, with things, and, you know, that's just an example of how the master plan goals developed as they were.
Sidewalks.
Should be, yeah, sidewalks should be top of mind for us anyways.
I think you got to ask the people too. We did that with the, with the billboards and actually did a poll and got a lot of answers, like 300 responses, and it was fascinating, because it wasn't all what I expected. And so we sit here and think about the Flanders Road, but you know, I've been in this town for 60 years, I go by there and I figure it out. At the end of the day, part of me is like, I don't want another light on Main Street, and part of me is like, oh, that would be great, but what are the, what does everybody else think? I mean, if you've got 80% of people saying, no, don't put another light on Main Street, are we saving for something that most people don't want? And so I think, I think we also have to have, on that theme we talked about in the subcommittee meeting, like, we got to make sure we're representing the whole town's thinking, because it was fascinating to do that. That's also important when we, I mean, we did that in the master plan partly, but when you then look at a specific implementation...
It's much easier if you look at a specific...
Right. Everybody said we don't want any more traffic, okay, no problem, just...
Traffic is a function of prosperity.
And what's actually viable, well, how do people feel, how strongly do they really feel about it?
It could be, you know, more my tenure on the board too, but there's an institutional knowledge on the board that, you know, like you're just going over the account, that makes perfect sense, and you added a couple of other conditions, so, you know, it already revises your thinking about what's responsible and practical, but I think the master plan just also, you know, spending a lot of time with sustainable Westboro as well, where there are a lot of goals and objectives in the climate action plan, which are consistent with the master plan, but potentially at odds with, with other things, you know? And the important thing is not, is to me, that things get adjudicated and discussed, where you literally say, yeah, this is not a priority now, because everything can't be a priority, so we can't fund this now, this isn't reasonable, there's not a readiness for this. But this other thing, there is a readiness for, and we need to push forward or push it over the line. And those are the things which I'd kind of like to have in my mind when we're, when we're working at this. Anyways, thank you for that, sorry to take those extra few minutes.
What I will do is I'll reach out to the town accountant tomorrow and ask her for an accounting of the mitigation fund and the projects that were named in it.
See what we've got. Because I wonder how much to push it over the line, well, and also what's the remedy? What's the design for that intersection? Is there one? I'm informed by the Oda Street, you know, the, all the discussion on that, that if there is a money bomb coming down from our money from the federal government redistributed to us, that it might be able to be reused for some of these road projects, but you have to be ready with engineering, right, before you got to be ready to move.
Yeah, with Oda Street, with the corridor plan, we are moving forward with that to request TIF money and to request Masworks money and Complete Streets money, and we're hoping assembling all of those things will allow us to do the entire corridor plan, not just Phase 1 or Phase 1 and 2, but all three phases. And, and the idea is to apply for everything all at once, and we have a working group that actually has its second meeting next week to discuss that, and we're trying to also solicit and co-opt our neighboring towns to apply as well for projects in that general vicinity, where three towns of Westboro, Shrewsbury, and Northborough come together so that we can accomplish greater infrastructure impact in the Route 9 corridor.
The other thing I think we have to be aware of is that this money is being held, and this really bothers me, quite frankly, that sitting, there's money sitting in this mitigation fund that's been there for 10 years and we've never used it.
We should have put it in Apple stock.
That we've never used, and, you know, I really feel that's irresponsible of the town, that they took money for a certain project or something to be done and then didn't follow through, and it's just been sitting there. So I don't know whether there are other funds than the ones at Flanders Road, whether there are other things like that, but I just really feel very responsible for the fact that that money's sitting there and we've never followed through and done anything.
Well said. The problem, the problem with that, Hazel, is that, you know, a lot of those funds were partial contributions, you can't really ask, I mean, depending on the scope of the project, I don't think it's appropriate to ask someone to fund the entire light at Flanders. At some point, the town needs to decide whether they're going to fund the balance, and there's always been other things that the town wants to spend money on.
You know, the town then shouldn't ask for it. I mean, the thing is that, that's the thing that bothers me, is that you don't ask for money unless you're planning to use it for something, and it's irresponsible of the town that we've sat there with that money for this long, even if it was partial, there should have been some plan on how to use that money and get something done, if that's why we asked the money for it in the first place.
So what, what would we ask for then? You can't ask for something that's not related to the impact of the project.
Well, right, but the thing is, you have to think about how, yeah, but if you're asking for partial funding, then you have to, as a town, be responsible for following through with that and getting the project done or finding funding which would have done that. That's all I'm saying.
I'm agreeing with you on that, but, but this board doesn't necessarily decide the priority of those projects or where the town's going to spend money or, or any of the budget items, and so when we ask for partial funding, we're, we're really hoping that the town does something with it, but it's not something we can initiate. We can't say, well, we're going to put the light on, you know, the expense of the light on the warrant, that's, it's not in the scope of our authority.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that, you know, we maybe ought to think this through a little bit more before we just ask for mitigation funds, if we realize that the project may not be able to go through. Yeah, you know, that's all we...
Yeah, I think I agree with that in the sense that we, you know, we try to structure the language of that mitigation to be, to give the town some flexibility on how to use the money so that it doesn't just sit there. I think we did that with CSX. We asked them for substantial amount of mitigation, and, and that money was used pretty quickly. So I, yeah, I think it definitely would benefit us to look at how we structure the language of those conditions.
Mr. Chair, I opened up a can of worms, I think, maybe a little bit with my extra news, so I'll make a move to adjourn tonight.
And I'll second it.
Need a third?
Any discussion, we'll do, we'll do a roll call, all those in favor, Hazel?
Yes.
Jim Ball?
Yes, Mark.
Jim Keller?
Yes.
Pete Bouchard?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, that's five to zero to adjourn. Thank you, guys, have a great night.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Stay well.